Before we proceed, I'd like to briefly turn over the meeting to an outstanding student who will receive the President's Award tonight. Please welcome to the dais Nicole Loy from the Young Women's Leadership Academy.
Thank you, President Ochoa, and good evening. My name is Nicole Loy, and I am a senior at the Young Women's Leadership Academy. It is my honor to call this meeting to order. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to Isleta Independent School District's Meeting of the Board of Trustees. The Meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the board that the public is allowed to attend as provided Isleta ISD Policy BED. We invite members of the public to make comments during the citizens' input portion at the start of the meeting according to instructions provided with the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into a discussion on matters in citizens' input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting often attended by students and ask that we conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of Isleta Independent School District. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:02 PM. We have a quorum with Shane Haggerty, Chris Hernandez, Charlie Bustillos, Mike Dwyer, Connie Woodruff, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Catherine Lucero is running late, but she is considered excused. Ms. Trustee Woodruff, please introduce our junior ROTC.
It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the pledges of allegiance, and then posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the junior ROTC Color Guard from Bel Air High School, Go Big Red. The Color Guard Commander is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jacina Vasquez. The other colored guard members are Cadet Major Julian Gamboa, Cadet Commander/Command Sergeant Major Damian Fuentes, and Cadet Captain Alicia Petis. The pledge leader is Cadet Second Lieutenant Giselle Retonya. Will you please stand for the President's Presentation of Colors, reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance? And I would like to ask a moment of silence on behalf of Daniel Desparza, the senior marching band student at Bowie High School, and also that we remember the victims and families of the 911 attack. Please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
Arms, march, left, 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 right, right, left. Arms, side, march, left. Color guard, hold, left, face, present, arms. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, please join me in the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God and one indivisible. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Order, march, outward, face, forward, march, left, 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 right, 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 left. Color guard, hold, hold. Order, march, up, down, face. Color guard, report, left, 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 right, 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 left. Color guard, hold, center, face, right, face, forward, march, left, left.
Dr. De La Torre, do we have recognitions and introductions this evening?
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, esteemed guests. Yes, we do. I invite our chief Human Capital Management Officer, Mrs. Bobby Russell Garcia, to lead in our recognitions and introductions this evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. We have two recognitions for you this evening. At this time, we ask all trustees to please come to the front of the dais for the presentation. Audience members, please remain seated until the recognitions are complete. Thank you. Our first recognition is in honor of the Young Women's Leadership Academy Senior Nicole Loy, who has received an Ambassador Award from the United Nations Association of the USA in Interview Technologies for her community service in inspiring other students to get involved in their community. Nicole was recognized for 109 hours of service to others with a special dedication for delivering impact towards the UN's global goal of quality education. Nicole is actively involved at school and holds various leadership positions, including Student Council Vice President, Vice President of National Honor Society, and Dance Team Captain. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome the President's Award winner for the month of September, Young Women's Leadership Academy Senior Nicole Loy. She is accompanied by Principal Melinda Villalobos. Our second recognition honors Saguilam Elementary School PE teacher Adrian Stevens, who was recently named the 2023-24 Region 19 Elementary Teacher of the Year. Adrian was announced as the winner during a special Region 19 awards ceremony last month, and he will now go on to represent Isleta ISD in our region in the prestigious Texas Teacher of the Year contest this fall. To date, seven Isleta ISD teachers have gone to win Texas Teacher of the Year, more than any other district in the state. We take great pride in all of the dedicated teachers at our district, and we wish Mr. Stevens of best of luck as he competes with other regional teachers of the year at the state level. We'll find out in October if he's bringing home the eighth Texas Teacher of the Year Award to the District of Champions. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a big round of applause for our 2023-24 Regional Elementary Teacher of the Year, Adrian Stevens. He is accompanied by Saguilam Elementary School Principal Jacqueline Salas. Let's hear it again for our Region 19 Elementary Teacher of the Year. This concludes our recognitions for tonight.
Secretary Lucero, do we have citizens' input this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa. Liliana Olivas regarding the Early College. My name is Liliana Olivas, and my daughter is a student at Hank's High School. And I recently received a call from the counselor, Mr. Miguel Carrera, informing me my daughter was being dropped from the Early College. The reason given for dropping her from the program is because she failed the TSI exam by four points. Once I received that call, I went straight to the school and spoke with Counselor Carrera, who told me, "Sorry, it was an oversight, and she can take the class next semester if she passes the TSI." That answer is completely unacceptable to me, as she had already dedicated herself and put forth a significant effort into her classes up to that point. It is very unfair to disregard all her efforts and unenroll her in those classes without a warning. I sent an email to Principal Ruben Gardena looking for additional help to remedy this situation. The principal told me the exact same thing. He said he was sorry. It was their mistake, but my daughter can attempt to take and pass the TSI, and they will put her back into those classes the following semester. This was a school negligence that is punishing my daughter and hurting her academic progress. We were previously advised that she would be afforded more opportunities to take and pass the TSI exam and not to worry. My daughter is an excellent student, a student that missed by only four points, and no one bothered to follow up. I followed the chain of command to no avail. The Hank's High School District Managers are well-paid professionals who are not doing their job ensuring that the students are given every opportunity to succeed academically to the best of their potential. A decision like this will degrade the accomplishments of not only the student but the district as a whole. The school is taking a top-tier student and punishing her by putting her into a lower tier. Hank's High School is trying heavily to recruit students into the program and for want if Hank's High School is not going to do everything they can to ensure their academic success. My daughter is being punished for a mistake that the school made and is now being set back due to their mistakes. I cannot comprehend how this is acceptable when the school is supposed to help the student, not harm them. I would like the board and those responsible at the school to come up with an alternative solution that would eliminate the damage to my daughter and other students' academic futures. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dr. De La Torre, do we have any reports for us this evening?
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board. We were prepared to present this evening on the 2020-23 ADF Accountability Ratings. However, the Texas Education Agency recently, yesterday as a matter of fact, made us aware that they don't intend to publish the ratings on September 26th or 28th as they originally had planned, but that they would take an additional four to six weeks before they were prepared to provide those ratings. Those ratings are driven by a formula. The formula that the Texas Education Agency Commissioner Morath relied on was found to be deficient in that it presented a scenario where schools and school districts could theoretically perform better and still receive a lower rating. We believe that they have reconsidered, are going to go back and study the cut points as well as the formula in general. And when they give us something a little more accurate, a little more permanent, we will come before the board and walk the board through both the 2023 ADF Accountability Methodology as well as the projected ratings, not just for the Isleta Independent School District but for every school in the Isleta Independent School District.
Thank you. We will now proceed to the agenda review. We will now discuss agenda items as listed in the posted notice of the regular meeting of the Isleta ISD Board of Trustees for September 13, 2023, and related recommended motions with the Superintendent and Executive Cabinet, and receive responses to questions and/or requests for additional information through the Superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on said items at the September 13, 2023 Regular Board of Trustees Meetings. Please stop me if you have any questions or wish to pull an item. Consent item number one is the Minutes of the Board of Trustees Workshop and Regular Board Meeting, August 23, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Consent item number two is the Monthly Financials Update as of July 2023. Consent item number three is Ratification of ISD Contract Number 20240019 with the El Paso County Community College District.
Mr. President, I would like to pull Item Three, please, from the consent agenda.
Okay, the request was made by Mr. Hernandez to pull Consent Item Number Three. Ratification of ISD Contract Number 20240019 with El Paso County Community College District. The order of the agenda has been approved. I have an electronic motion on the remaining consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the remaining consent agenda items as listed on this agenda as recommended by administration.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. We have a second by Mr. Hernandez. There we go. All votes have been cast. The results are seven in favor and none opposed. At this time, we would like to consider the pull of Consent Item Number Three, which is the Ratification of ISD Contract Number 20240019 with El Paso County Community College District. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to have some discussion. As a new board trustee, I've been learning a lot quickly, and I was very happy and grateful to Dr. Chacon and Mr. Hugo Martinez for meeting with me earlier today and telling me about the wonderful things that are happening with the COT programs all across the district. I learned that for the past 17 years, right, Dr. Chacon, that this has been part of the Bel Air High School Community Program, and I think it's fantastic. I think it's a win-win. Of course, anytime we can hand out dual credits, and this is a chance for students to get a career out the gate, and of course, it's a much-needed service for the community. So I will be supporting this, but before, I just wanted to get a little clarification. So I noticed this contract is specifically to pay basically the salary of EBCC instructors, correct?
Good evening, Mr. Hernandez, President Ochoa, Dr. Torre. That is correct, sir.
And it's for three courses that allow up to 12 students, meaning ideally, we would want 36 students enrolled, as that would be the maximum. In other words, we'd be getting the most bang for our buck.
That is correct. 12 kids is a max that each course can accommodate, and it would be nice if ideally, 12 kids, everything would work out in packs of 12 or 22 or and so on, just like our other cohorts do. However, there are 17 students currently enrolled. Of the 17 students, we needed to add an additional course from last year due to scheduling conflicts. Some of our students in this program are in the BSN program, so both programs, the scheduling conflicts conflict with each other. They're also in their extracurriculars. They have a lot of singletons, what we refer to "singletons," such as advanced orchestra, band courses, different courses that they have to fulfill their programs of study and also on the comprehensive side. The good news is that these courses are paid through CTE funds, either through federal or state funds that are allotted for CTE that can only be used for CTE students.
And so at one point, there had to be like, I guess, your best determination of what the amount of students that would be entering, and that was assumed that it would be 36 students?
There was never 36 students enrolled, as every year there was, I believe, 20 students anticipated to come, some that could not due to courses that they did not pass in the spring, right? The 17 that proceeded is what we have the need for. And these 17 students, due to their scheduling conflicts, those are the seven, that's why we added the additional course. We do start reviewing and anticipating master schedules since December, so our principals, along with the teams here, do review master schedules. We plan all spring on a master schedule. However, we anticipate things such as students not enrolling in the summer, their schedules changes, they proceed on to other extracurricular activities, or they fulfill other courses that they have, and that's where you see the shift in their master schedules, hence why we needed to add the additional course to accommodate the needs of those students.
So if it wasn't for the scheduling conflicts, and we can get these 17 students into two classrooms, then we would only need to pay for two courses?
That's correct. When possible, we would only pay-
What would be the dollar amount if we were only paying for two that we would be saving?
It would be about $20,000 less.
Do you think it's, I understand it's a challenge. We don't have crystal balls, and you know, and it's a bit of a puzzle when you're dealing with block scheduling. I mean, that's the challenge that I pose to myself as a school board trustee, is trying to identify places where we don't need to necessarily spend like this $20,000 for three courses when possibly we can do it with two. I guess the challenge would be, you know, looking at it as a puzzle and trying to figure out how we can work with all the scheduling conflicts and get it to two courses. I know this is something, this is a program that's been around for 17 years, and I know it's been going fantastic in a lot of ways. I'm just the type of person that always tries to see if we can just do a little bit better, especially if it means the opportunity to reappropriate funds. Do you think it's possible or that we can work with staff to maybe make this something that we can improve on in the future?
And-
Well, as the mother of the young lady said, one of the things that we need to focus on is we need to focus on accommodating the students' needs. And anytime you project enrollment or you project the number of students in a program, and this program is a federal program with what we call non-discretionary monies, if the monies aren't spent in that manner, they're not available to be spent in any other manner. They can't offset or support our operating budget. It must remain in CTE, and in this case, it must remain in the Health Professions Academy at Bel Air. So what we do is we go in and we understand that there are going to be incidents and events in people's private life, students who may have planned to take a course in the summer that would make them eligible to take the EMT course, any sort of change that disallows us from being able to create a concrete- a concrete master schedule prior to the first day of school. So rather than risk not being, having a class available for a student or students, we err on the side of making the additional expense. Now, one of the things that we'd like to share with the board, although we don't have all the details, I'm going to have Ms. Demata speak to you surrounding HB8, which will eliminate any cost for college professors teaching dual-credit courses or CTE courses in our district. The state would pick up their salary, which would be a significant reduction to our budget that then could be spent on instructional materials, supplies, and things of that nature. Priscilla?
Wait, one moment. I think too, trustee Hernandez, you bring up some good points. And there, when I was new on the board, there's so much to absorb at one time. The information is just overwhelming. And it took, I think I'm still, I know I'm still learning, to be honest with you. But what I did learn when we did the consolidation of schools, and this was at the middle school level from when it was, when we were, we shut down Valley View. Yeah, we brought it together. The master schedules are a very intense task to take on, and it's done with so much care. And there's, it's a whole team of people. And I know that the administrators take this extremely seriously. That's one thing. But the other part of that is it's about what we believe and value as board members. It's very important, of course, to be financially, be aware of everything we're doing financially to respect taxpayer funds. That's always extremely important. But the other side of that is making sure that each and every student, if there's one student, each and every student, especially a student that shows the desire to be in this type of program, that they have that opportunity, and we're putting all the opportunities in place, and they're worth every dollar. Just wanted to add that food for thought.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. And to be clear, I would never sacrifice the quality of education or the number of opportunities that are available for students. That absolutely has to stay at the highest standards. That's priority number one. So a second priority below that, because it is below that, is trying to do the best we can, you know, fiscally, with fiscal responsibility. And I'll always look for opportunities like this just to see if we can do a little bit better. I know certain funds have to be used certain ways, but even within that, you know, that bucket that it could be used in, there's still better ways. And I think community members are always going to enjoy hearing that, hey, we saved $20,000. We were going to spend $20,000, but now we're not. And now we have these funds to enhance the student experience.
I think though, Chris Hernandez, it really depends, though. We don't want to mislead them because we can't spend the funds in any other way anyhow. So that's something to consider, and that's with our learning. And I'm not trying to go back and forth. I hope you don't take it that way, but it really was a huge, huge, long learning experience for me. But I also think it's going to eliminate with what Ms. Matha says are-
Dr. Chacon, can you clarify? Because during our meeting earlier today, I was left under the impression that it would be possible for that $20,000 to be spent other ways within the HP.
It could be spent other ways within the CTE program. That's correct.
And that's what, that's what I'm talking about. I mean, there's, those are the opportunities that I'm looking to create by challenging ourselves to go through these, you know, difficult thing of, you know, like block scheduling, you know, this master scheduling. And if we can figure it out, I think all the ISD community members would be grateful. I also appreciate this discussion that we're having. It's my opinion, we can use a little bit more discussion. I know, I think especially with such an experienced board and successful board as this one, it's easy to run through these things. But I know there's a lot of community members that don't understand what's going on or why we're pressing these contracts. And I think these discussions help that. And that's really what I aim to do. Again, I will be supporting this item. I think it's extremely important that it goes forward. There are students that need these opportunities. I've been here for a few months. I was supposed to be here for four years. And I'm just setting what my goals are over the time. And I'm hoping moving forward that we can identify these things. And if it ever happens, let's please make it known to the public where we saved, even if it's just a few thousand dollars. I know to my community members, it means something. And that's all. And again, thank you for everybody's work, and thank you for this discussion.
One more thing.
I'm next.
Oh, she's next.
I'm next. So I really just want to say that just like they've been saying, creating a master schedule is not a matter of just, okay, how can we squeeze 12 kids into two classes? We really have to be very, very, very careful about even putting that impression out there because we need to make sure that everyone understands that we're going to spend the kind of money that it takes to give these kids a world-class education. And I also, I agree, it's great to save money, but when you're in this kind of situation, we're saying it must be spent, at least CTE, I understood that it had to be spent in healthcare. Am I right? It has to be spent in the healthcare. You know, that's at the HP. And I just hate to see us start trying to put kids in boxes where that they, they don't necessarily, they're not necessarily going to be able to be successful.
I don't think that's what I was saying or suggesting at all. I understand it's a challenge, but I'm asking us to be put up to that challenge of doing that. And yes, the funds must be, you know, either spread in HP or CTE, but there's different ways to spend it besides on EPCC staff. We can be using those funds still in the same programs to enhance the actual learning experience of the students. And we should not be afraid to have discussion or ask questions that especially the public would be interested in knowing. This, I could have approved this without having this discussion because I already got the information I needed. I'm having this discussion on the dais for the benefit of the public, and I think that's important. And I thank everybody for taking the time and everybody who made comments on this.
Mr. Hernandez, I apologize. You know, I get so passionate here in the dais, but what I was going to add, CTE is a very important program. I know trustee Wu Stiles is, he has a huge CTE desire to grow that program and make it very impactful, more impactful than what it is. And I would encourage that some gathering information together and joining that effort would also be important.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members. Trustee Hernandez, Board President Ochoa. So I will add that I've been working actively with Dr. Chacon and Mr. Martinez to ensure that we do get the benefit of House Bill 8, if any. So House Bill 8 came about this last legislative session, the 88th regular session. And essentially, the legislature dedicated additional monies to community colleges. And so what that means is that they've focused now on providing funds to specifically address high school students that are coming from low-income families. And they're putting aside that money to cover a lot of these costs that unfortunately, the school districts are burdened with. So we're looking at the scope and the limitations of House Bill 8. To the extent that they apply to this MOU, you better believe I'm going to review and revise it and make sure that we get a discount where it's, where we're entitled to one. And so Dr. Sarata from EPCC has been very forthcoming. They sent correspondence recently to alert us and say, hey, good news. You're no longer going to be responsible for that portion of the cost, instructor's salary. We're going to go ahead and absorb that cost because we have additional money from the state to do so. So please rest assured that if this MOU is approved tonight, it'll be subject to any necessary revisions in conformance with House Bill 8. Thank you.
Thank you so much for saying that. It makes me feel really good hearing that. Thank you for your work.
Okay, before I ask for a motion, I'd like to say that I do commend this kind of discussions. I think it's, like Mr. Hernandez pointed out, that we're here for the public, and they need to understand a lot of these, these agenda items or consent items that we approve. It's a benefit to our community to understand how all this comes into play with the education of our children or our kids or our students. We all here, sitting here on the board, are taxpayers as well. We look out for the taxpayer because, like I said, we're all taxpayers ourselves, and we want to spend our money wisely. But we also want to provide the best education possible and the best opportunities for every student in Isleta District. And like you brought up, the discussion on savings, I'm sure that there are other ways, or even in this one, that we could possibly look at savings. That is always on the mind of every high school, every school, every principal. They're always looking to stretch out their dollars that are allocated for them. But again, thank you for the discussion. I think it's very worthwhile that we stop and have these, and I hope we have some more in the future. All right, having said that, may I have a motion? Ms. Woodruff?
Mr. President, I move that we ratify ISD Contract Number 20240019 in our local agreement with El Paso Community College District to develop and provide entry-level emergency medical technology courses at Bel Air High School and contingent upon final negotiations and in-house council review.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. We have a second by Mr. Hernandez. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. At this time, the Board of Trustees has determined that a closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the posted agenda for this date. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, including but not limited to the sections and purposes covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code, 551.071, 72, 73, 74, 76, 82, 127, 821, 83, 84, 87, and 89. Should any final action, decision, or vote be required with regard to any matter considered in closed session, the final action, decision, or vote shall be in the open meeting or at a subsequent public meeting with notice. The board will now go into closed session in the Rio Grande Room at 6:40 p.m.
I reconvene this meeting of the Board of Trustees with Shane Hagerty, Chris Hernandez, Charlie Bustillos, Mike Dwyer, Carney Woodruff, Katherine Lucero and myself at 7:59 p.m. Actions after closed session, one discussion and possible action to join AF accountability lawsuit and approved related board resolutions. May I have a motion? Ms. Woodruff.
Mr. President, I move to approve updates to the district's emergency operations plan.
We have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Moving on. We come to the end of the session. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Adjourn. Thank you.